This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Good evening, this is the December nineteenth, um, City Council, East Hampton City Council Ordinance Meeting. Um, and want to call the meeting to order, um, so I'd like to open it up, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi, great, um, so first thing I want to do is, uh, we have some meeting minutes that we need to approve. Um, let me just open those up, uh, first one is, um, let's do the last one, which was?
Eleven four.
Eleven four, um.
There's also one from eight twenty.
Mm-hmm, eight twenty.
Um, five twenty-one.
Five twenty-one.
And four eleven, I mean, four one.
Four one, um, so, um. So I'll take a motion to accept those minutes.
So move.
Some, um, seconds, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, perfect, great, thank you, um, so the first thing we want to get to is the continued conversation about the, um, changes to the council on aging ordinance. Um, where we last left off, we were having a discussion about what was the appropriate amount of, uh, members who could serve on the committee who were not East Hampton residents. Uh, I think we indicated that we would still like them to be from Western Mass, um, and, uh, yeah, so did you, did you have additional thoughts, um, Councillor Smith, on kind of where you landed, kind of in your thought process with this?
Mm-hmm, um, I know we were talking about the difference between one and three, and, I can see, I can see both, on the one hand, if we only had one person outside of East Hampton on the board, it would obviously be more East Hampton, so on that side, there's that. On the other side, if we had, um, three members that were from out of town, one of the things that, I notice a lot in East Hampton is that we could use more infrastructure in businesses and residence, residencies that are really focused on aging issues, and sometimes I, I agree with what you had said before, that sometimes the expertise lies in other areas, whether or not that would be a guest coming in to, to give their context, or actually have them on the board. That, that was what was going on in my mind, so ultimately, I was thinking, I, I understand the one a lot more than the three. However, I think with the, um, if we had a project coming up that we knew, so for example, a new senior center, and we wanted to have someone who had more expertise in that, my question to you, would the expertise be more helpful in, someone who has gone through that process, for example, with the new schools, or with the new fire and police, or would it be someone who had an expertise in aging and what would be, you know, what, what would be relevant to a senior center? And I think both can be true, but that's where my thoughts were, that when we're looking ahead at the different projects coming up, I want to make sure that from a professional standpoint, the, um, council has as, as much advocacy on the council as possible, um, while also keeping the integrity of this being an East Hampton board, so.
And if I can't, Tom, I'll, I'll turn that over to you, I, I think that was a similar question that I had in terms of, when, when you are looking at board membership, like, that what are you looking for peace? Um, and that what is going to be most beneficial to you, because if I choose one, or I go with three, right? Like, I want to make sure that, that our decision sets you up to be most successful, and so, is, is, is the one, like, who, like, who are those three people, right? That are, that are going to help you to be most successful, and so I think they, they are very similar questions, but certainly, I was thinking about that as well.
So just to go back to, to, um, Councillor Smith's comments, um, what, what hits me about that is I think, I think the first priority would be someone who has the background experience in, in aging issues, because that's long-term on the board, where the building project is, while, while it might take a while, it's a short term, in, in the bigger scheme of things, let's say it takes us five years to build a new senior center, um, but this person could be, could conceivably be on the board much longer than that, so it's, to me, it's more an issue of, um, looking at those aging issues, where, where I thought you were going to go with that, and it, my mind led me there was, one of the benefits of these folks from nearby, could be Northampton, Holyoke, what have you, um, could be a different perspective, you know, sometimes, sometimes those of us in East Hampton are somewhat insulated, and all we see is East Hampton, and all we see is what's going on here, where if someone joined the board who, um, works in East Hampton but lives in Amherst, or lives in Holyoke but works in East Hampton, what have you, because remember, I believe it says, "Live or work," so, so it does require them to have some connection to East Hampton. Um, it, it could potentially bring us that perspective from, that they could bring from their community, and what's going on in their community with this, with the Senior Center or Council on Aging.
Yeah, I find it so interesting, because the, the senior center model in Northampton versus the senior center in Westfield, for example, just use different approaches, and I'd be really curious to see more about what from each of those approaches would be more helpful, so, yeah, I'm excited about that as a project.
And, and then the, the only other, um, thought was, when we were talking about one or three, um, if, if it, if it does, if we do land on three, I had suggested it be a, a percentage rather than a number. So, for example, no more than one-third of the board, uh, if, if that were, if that metric were to be applied to other boards, three could be way too many on a five-member board.
Right.
Um, but, so if, if it's no more than one-third of the board, it's never going to be a majority.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Yep.
I have a point for clarification, are we making, um, a decision based on the senior center, or all from the city?
No, we're just talking about the Council on Aging right now, um, and then, and I, and I, I got one or three in my head, because I was thinking one-third. So I, I own that, um, so, um, I, I don't think that we have gotten to the place yet of, um, talking about the other one, yeah, standardizing it, so I think this is kind of our test run, so to speak, to kind of think about what's going to be, um.
Because we just moved that last night, right?
Yeah.
Just the, the other one, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. I get, excuse me, I, I guess the question is, though, when we talked about those other boards or committees in towns that don't have a residency requirement, um, the question would be whether the council is going to be proactive in looking at that and making a change, or wait for, um, as we did, wait for that group to come forward and make some sort of request. Um, but as you said, I, I think Councillor Smith said it before, it could be scary if left the way it is today, some of those boards could be completely made up of non-residents.
Right, and so I think we've just kind of sent that to, to Ordnance Committee to actually explore what that could look like. And so I think we're, we're, we're trying the road of being proactive, um, with hopefully not opening a can of worms, but really being able to kind of dig deep and ask questions, and, and I think that this conversation in particular has been super helpful, um, for me, and, and hopefully for the other committee members, um, to really kind of begin to think about, um, how do we utilize resources, meaning people outside of East Hampton, to, to support, to support the community, particularly when they also care about East Hampton and, and are, are invested in East Hampton in, in some particular way? And, and why they might not have a home, or those types of, um, connections, they, they still have roots, right? And those roots kind of, kind of go throughout their community to here and back, and et cetera, so I think that's what we're hoping to be able to begin to explore.
Okay.
Hmm, um, so have we landed on a, on a, like, on a number that we think is like one-third of, or?
I think one-third is fair. Seems.
Yeah.
So, uh, I'll take a motion to, um, adopt, uh, for the Council on Aging, um, adding D on here, there can be no more than one-third of board members that are non-residents, and I actually think we added in here, um, from Western Massachusetts.
Okay.
Yeah, and I believe, I believe that language would come right after where it says, um, a requirement is that they live or work in East Hampton?
Uh, well, we added a section, we added section D on the.
Okay. Perfect.
Just to clarify those things, so I, that's a motion.
I would second that.
Great, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, perfect, great, and then, Tom, there, we also, we didn't really get down into, um, the section two-dash-five-two employees of council, was there anything there that you wanted to add or clarify for us? I mean, it all made, it, it, it was helpful, but I just want to add, you know, are there things that you want to talk about?
I believe the current language makes it sound like the director hires the employees, and she does not do that, um, unilaterally, it's obviously through the Personnel Department, so I, I believe in the original, um, document I submitted to you, I, I changed the language to say something like, "With the assistance of the Personnel Department, the Director hires employees," something to that effect.
Mm-hmm.
You have the original that I gave you.
Yeah, so what it says is, "Section two-dash-five-two employees of council, the Council of Aging, uh, the Council on Aging Director may hire such clerks and other employees as it may require with approval from the city Personnel Director."
Perfect, that's what it should say.
Okay, great, uh, and then, "Section two-dash-five-three duty to carry out programs on, added, the needs of older adults, coordination with state council."
Yes.
Good.
And there was one other one, Connie, further up, I believe, that referred to, um, the Chair of the Board being appointed by the Mayor. And that does not happen, the Chair of the Board is appointed by the Board.
Yep, we have that one.
Perfect.
Great, um, in the city, and then, um, also under section two-dash-five-three, "It shall be the duty of the Council on Aging staff to carry out programs designed to meet the needs of seniors, older adults, in coordination with the programs of the Department of Elder Affairs, established under section one of chapter nineteen A of the general law." Added, "The duty of the Board of the Council on Aging is to advise the Director and East Hampton Council on Aging and Enrichment Center on implement, implementing the mission and services of the Council on Aging by law of three-dash-two-three-dash-five-seven." Um, anything you want to add there?
No, that sounds appropriate.
Okay, great, so I'll take a motion to, uh, oh, you all have any questions, sorry?
Nope.
Yeah, okay, so I'll take a motion to, I should just get this this way, so I'll just take a, a motion to, uh, approve the amendments to the Council on Aging as presented.
So move.
Send it.
Send it, great, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Perfect, great, um, Tom, so what we're going to do now is, we will, um, send this recommendation back to council, um, and then, we don't have to have a public hearing.
I believe so.
No, um, and then you will be, uh, welcome to speak on it then, uh, and that will happen on our next meeting.
January eighth.
January eighth, um, we'll be good to present that.
It should be fun.
Okay, great, I wasn't sure if there's other things we had to take care of, um, great, does that work for you, Tom?
That's a city council meeting, January eighth?
Yep, city council, uh, in the upstairs chambers.
That works.
Six o'clock.
That works.
All right, perfect, thank you so much.
All right, thank you all very much.
All right, see you.
You too.
Great, uh, the next thing we're going to move to, and this is really just intended to be, um, a discussion with, um, the folks from the, um, East Hampton Affordable and Fair Housing Partnership. Um, just want to talk a little bit about this, um, and then set a plan of how we want to go about it. I don't want to get into it tonight, because I want to make sure the, the, um, councillors have sufficient time to read through this lengthy and deep document.
Thorough.
Thorough documents, um, which is amazing, right? I know you all put a lot of a year's work of time into this, and so, um.
Time deserves a raise.
Yes, um, uh.
Oh, wait, we're all here.
Uh, uh.
Excuse me, really quickly, can I get your name for the record?
Yoshi Bird.
Okay, oh, hi Yoshi, how you doing?
Um, so just want to acknowledge all the hard work that you all did to, to put this together and, and give this to us. Um, so I think the, the, the initial thing that, you know, I would like to kind of start is, I know you gave a presentation last night, but is there anything else you'd like to add in terms of?
Um, I'm trying to think, I felt like I did a really good job of kind of giving you the broad brushstrokes of what we're trying to do, which is really making the zoning make more sense, and the big pieces are around, um, changing some of the setback limitation kind of things, going from, we have like five, uh, zoning, uh, codes or areas right now, I can't.
Districts.
Districts, thank you, it's been a long day, so narrowing that down to three, instead of having, I think there's actually six, maybe? Five or six.
Five to forty.
Right, but then they're cut up in between, there's like a five, a ten, a fifteen, forty, then there's the smart growth, anyway, so making fewer of those, making them right-sized, because especially R forty is kind of, as you saw from the presentation, it's ridiculous, like, and all of the other existing homes, most of them in the, in the R forty, don't comply anyway. Um, so thinking about that, thinking about building, being able to build, uh, duplexes by right, thinking about how and where ADUs go, um, we made some suggestions too for changes to some of the language, like, the word "family" is used in there a lot, but not defined, so we wanted to change how we think about that. Um, some of it was just changed, just like the Department of Housing and Community Development no longer exists under that name, so we wanted to make sure we update that, uh, make sure that everything that's in there actually is also in line with state regulations, um, so that's a lot of what, what was in there, what's in there, so.
Yep, yep, perfect, um, so what, the way that I would like to approach this, and we can, I'd like to kind of begin to think about timeline, and I want to be thoughtful about how your committee wants to work on this, in terms of, do you want to set group of people to be the ones who kind of are working with us?
Work with all of you.
Yeah, um, and so I think we need to think about that, but my approach to this, I would really like to think of this for now as a working group. Um, you know, I think there's sometimes a lot of protocol, and, you know, calling, I, you know, and I'd like to minimize that just a little bit, so that we can kind of move as quickly as we can. Um, and then we'll, as we kind of narrow things down, and we get to, this is what the final thing is going to be, then we'll move back into, um, that, so that we can certainly make approvals and, and things like that, but I'd like for us to work collaboratively, um, and.
And the planning board has to also.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, so this will be our kind of first go-around, so that we're all clear, and then we can kind of send that on to the planning board. Um, but certainly want to make sure as we're going through, if we have those initial questions, that we can kind of address them. Um, and it's helpful that, that, um, Council Derby has, has been here since, I think, the eighteen hundreds, and so has a pretty.
Since God was a boy.
Yes, and, and so has a pretty good idea of, of ordinances and, and, and so, and zoning, um, so, uh, that would be, um, a good thing to, to be able to kind of work through for us, um, and before we send it to the planning board, which I think is going to be a little bit deeper dive, right? But if we can kind of minimize some of those things, and, and try to catch some of those things earlier than later, that would just, I think, kind of help move the process along.
I think, so, that makes sense, I will say, just for full disclosure, I did already send a copy of this to Jesse Belcher-Temme, who's Chair of Plannings, he really liked it, um, so I don't know what your official process is with him, but.
Yeah, so I think what we have to do is, we'll go through this, we'll make edits, discuss it, and when we're good with the product, although I don't like that word, with the report and kind of the recommendations, we will send that then to Planning, and then Planning will have the opportunity to kind of look through that, and then we'll set a public hearing, and then we'll all come back together again, and kind of have that conversation. Um, but I think for, for us moving forward, you know, it would be really great to be able to kind of have a working group, work through it, and things like that. Uh, in terms of your process, um, and, and I'm going to defer to, um, our zoning ordinance guru here, um, uh, how quickly do we want to move through this, do we want to meet once a month, twice a month, like, what is kind of, what, what is people's capacity to kind of get through some of this, and what has kind of happened in the past for a larger kind of?
So, I think that, um, as, as far as process goes, uh, you know, I've already read it, uh, so I think that we could probably, um, you know, give everybody time to get on the same page with it, and then have our initial kind of discussion, and point out things that we think are points of emphasis, I think that would be good for us, just to kind of like identify for us, and then bring, I like the working group idea, I think we've done it in the past, it's completely okay, and, you know, like, some councillors don't like that idea, but I, I'm fine with it, I think it's good for this, um, to be able to bring in the, the people that created this to discuss some of the finer points, um, and create kind of like a punch list. Say, all right, so here are the points of emphasis that I think that, you know, are the most important things that we would like to accomplish first, uh, you know, and then see if there's things, you know, maybe it's almost like a triage. Are there things that can wait, are there things that we want to make sure we accomplish as soon as possible? Um, you know, because there are probably going to be some broader impacts as far as, um, you know, as we get into it, um, you know, public input, um, the ideas around, you know, people, I, I know, like, this always comes up when we talk about the zoning character, and, you know.
We took that out, actually.
Okay.
We took out all references to community character.
Right, okay, that's good, yeah, and so.
On purpose.
Yeah, well, and, and I think there's still, there probably will, people will potentially bring that up, and, and, yeah, um.
It was though replaced with pretty appropriate, which are like architectural.
Architectural, like, you know, yeah.
Things that were actually more definable.
Right, yep.
Because that was really our issue, one of the issues with it was, the term "community character" is, it's all ambiguous, it's incredibly ambiguous, so it was like architectural style.
Yep.
So we changed that out, and
Okay.
Mm-hmm. In some places, it's just gone, because it didn't make sense.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but then I think, like, once we work through that, and, and which could be potentially, I mean, if we had, you know, um, a couple meetings to start, uh, hammer, like, we could potentially get relatively far if we were all feeling comfortable with it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, and put together a, you know, a, a pretty, uh, clear, bulleted list for the planning board to say, here are the things that we're going to work on, so that they know what's coming, and then set the, like, public hearing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then that process would continue, like, the, you know, it's kind of, it's almost, again, it's like a work, like, generally with the planning board, it's almost like a working group again.
Yep, yep.
Um, uh, but, you know, I, I don't, uh, I don't anticipate this necessarily taking, you know, a, a year or anything like that, and, you know, I think we could probably hammer it out.
It took a year to write.
It took a year to write, which is why all, like, so much groundwork has been done, I think that we could use that as a stepping point to be able to enact some of this in a pretty efficient way, um, from what I read.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, you know, I think we can start off probably having one or two meetings, and then kind of get a feel for what the timeline's looking like, um, so.
Who would be part of this count, of this friggin' group?
Yep, so, your committee is seven?
Sure. Yeah, it changes.
Right, I think it's full right now.
We have Ms. Ball, I am, yeah, we have Chira, Chira, Lindsay, and the new person we haven't seen yet, and Donna, we're nine.
Nine, okay, so you can have four.
Okay.
Right, so I think that you're, I think the ideal thing to do would be to have the same four people. Um, and so I think it would be helpful for you all to get us that list of who, who's going to be the, the committee, your committee, that's going to be kind of working with us.
Just for the record, um, if there's nine members, how do you come up with the floor?
Uh, well, a quorum would be five.
Okay, so you can't have a quorum?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, they could, right, there is, there is, like, if, if someone really wanted to come, yeah, no, but if someone wanted to come, they could, they could attend the meeting.
Yes, yes, yes.
And they could speak as a member of the public, but they wouldn't be part of the kind of process of hammering it out necessarily.
Yeah, they couldn't be a.
Yeah, smaller groups.
They, they couldn't be a part of deliberation, so they would have to speak during public speak and then sit, right, so, I think that's.
I just wanted to make sure that we had, why? Does it make sense for us to go back to the partnership and say, um, we need to have a group of up to four members?
Yes.
I want to say it that way, because not everyone has the time necessarily, so, we'll, um, our next meeting is January, but if it can't wait, then we can.
Yeah, I think it would give us some time to do this, um, when is your next meeting, I know it's in January.
I'll tell you in a second.
Okay, I'm going to wait.
I, I mean, I think if we waited until after their next meeting, I think that would be fine, because then we could really, like, we could read it multiple times.
Yeah.
To make sure.
Of January.
Yeah, so if we looked at February.
Yeah, okay, and I think we probably could do something else in the meantime, because I, we have that other thing on, so we can do that, um, so, and actually, we could meet even as some of our own questions before we meet with them. So I think, so there's two things I think that we would need from you all, uh, one is, who are the four people? And two, what are some of the dates that you all for sure could, could, could schedule meetings? And are we good meeting once a month, or would we like to work a couple times a month, like, what is?
I'm not going to answer for people who aren't here.
Yep.
Okay.
For this, for this committee, what are we thinking?
I mean, I think probably, if, if we have a dedicated meeting, for, I mean, depending what else is on the agenda, I think wants to get a feel for it with the group, and then make it should, there.
Okay, all right.
Because we could be super, you never know, like, be super efficient, we could, like, get through a ton of stuff and surprise ourselves.
Okay.
Can the working group also coordinate asynchronously, or does it have to be a meeting format? Like, could they talk to each other over email?
I know that, like, open meeting law stuff get a little complicated there, but I think if, you know, like, something that could happen, if people could put their thoughts down, and send it to the group with a, for informational purposes only, and nobody responds. Like, that, that is a way to kind of be able to share thoughts and kind of collaboratively work without violating open dialogue.
But certainly within your committee, right, that working group can talk amongst.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And report out and stuff like that, right? So I'm making sure that's good. All right, so, we'll leave that to you then, to, uh, let us, let me know the four people and some dates, and then I can coordinate with, um, the committee here to, to identify some some times, and then certainly schedule some meeting rooms and things like that.
That's awesome, thanks.
Mm-hmm, absolutely, any other questions from the committee to?
No.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Great, yeah, again, thank you so much for this, I think we'll start there, um, and then we'll move forward as we get going. Awesome, thank you, this was great.
I'm going to sit up there now. Next meeting.
Wait, what's up?
Is there a meeting?
CPA.
Oh, CPA, that's right. It's also a downstairs meeting too.
Housing project there too.
Yeah.
Um.
Ton of meetings there.
Yeah, great, so you have that, you have this, all right, so the next item we want to get to is the East Hampton Shrubbery Ordinance, so we have the.
Redline version.
The redline version of, um, the, the ordinance, uh, the changes, uh, from the city solicitor. Uh, do we want to take a couple of minutes to look this over, do we want to go over it's, the, as a group, like, how do we want?
My reader's in the car.
Mm-hmm. Want me to read it?
Sure.
Yeah.
All right, well, let me get my glasses.
Right. Well, I wasn't expecting the. Well, I wasn't expecting the, it was, the traffic was insane. I never drive in a rush hour, and it was like.
Students are going home.
Everybody's out.
So I'm just gonna read what has been added. Um, I'm not gonna add, I'm not gonna, what has been stricken. Um, so the owner of the property adjacent to a sidewalk. I needed this person for my dissertation. The owner of the property adjacent to a sidewalk under the control of the city. Or to which, or to which the public at large has a right of access, shall not allow bushes. Trees or other plantings to encroach upon, overhang, or obstruct such sidewalks. And shall as necessary maintain such bushes, trees, or other plantings. Along said sidewalk so as to allow unobstructed passage and clearance up to the surface of the sidewalk.
Makes sense.
Sounds okay, so that was section, sorry, I should have said this way, that was section eight dash three six A, property owner responsibilities for shrubbery. Are we good with that?
Alright, I I find it a little vague when they're just saying that you need to have unobstructed bushes all the way to the end. Unobstructed passage, like. I don't quite know what that means and how far out they would have to have, so. Surface up to the clearance of the side. Clearance up to the surface of the sidewalk, that's fine, but like a lot of people will put gardens on the edges of their lawn to the sidewalk. Are they saying that since you couldn't walk through that, that wouldn't be permissible?
I think it would be fine as long as it doesn't encroach upon, overhang, or obstruct the sidewalk. So if it's just like a garden that's on the side of the sidewalk, it's not obstructing the sidewalk, it would be fine.
So so let's pretend that this is a sidewalk, right? Sometimes there are. Tall bushes that, and sometimes what happens is the brick here, but it like begins to overhang over the sidewalk, and I think that's where it becomes obstructing.
I guess they just don't like the clearance up to the surface of the sidewalk. It just seems, it just seems unnecessarily. Keep the sidewalk clear, right? Like, is what that's saying?
I think these red lines were done by our solicitor. Who, uh, you know, this is a le- legal, legal, legally, which, you know, I mean. Like, I I, I guess I don't, I don't have a real problem with it, just because, like, I get it, like, if it's, the surface is the paved part of the sidewalk, you wanna make sure that it's cleared up to that. Because. Like, I I don't think you necessarily would need to make sure that once you leave the surface that there's any clearance. Because the side, hopefully the sidewalk is gonna be wide enough. To be ADA compliant, which a lot of our sidewalks are not. But at least it would have a clear path on the paved surface of the sidewalk.
There are a lot of, like, like, there is a lot of overhanging, right, and so that. The half the sidewalk is gone, right, and so we wanna make sure that that is unstructured. And in terms of the lawyer, I don't wanna say that he copied and pasted, but I'm sure that there are lots of shrubbery ordinances out there that are probably pretty.
And a lot of these ordinances, like the languages. But it is, I mean, like, sometimes ordinance language is strange.
It's like, or to which.
So it's just legally, that's fine.
So we good with that one?
I I I, I'm okay with that, it seems, seems clear to me.
Section eight dash three six B, traffic visibility at intersection, property owner responsibility. No owner of property shall erect or allow a structure to exist. Allow a bush, tree, or other planting to grow or take any other action whatsoever. Which obstructs the view of the intersection. Of any public or private way for a distance of twenty-five feet. Measured from the point at which the nearest edges of the two ways intersect. If the point from which the distance is measured cannot be readily determined, the director of public works. Shall determine the area of unobstructed view required for the safety of the public. The director of public works shall therefore file with the board of public works a plan showing. The required area of unobstructed and shall provide the owner of the property a copy of said plan by United States mail.
Okay, I I think, um. Necessarily want a wordsmith, but I think we might need to, so. Uh, the director of public works shall thereafter file the board with the board of public works a plan showing. The required area of unobstructed. Something needs to be said after unobstructed.
Yeah, that felt awkward.
Yeah, uh, whether it's the um, the area of unobstructed view.
View, that's what I thought.
And and shall provide the owner of the property a copy of said plan by mail. I I think that just is missing a word. But it makes sense. I wonder. Trying to think of as many intersections as I can here. Because this includes, this includes any structure, which would mean a sign, it would mean a fence, it would mean, and. It would be interesting to. For us to maybe, as in our, like, just personal travels, to take a look at some areas that we travel in East Hampton. Where there might be fences or signs, and just do like an informal, hey, is that twenty-five feet? You know, uh, have we done that yet?
No, but I can give a really good example. On Bryan Avenue and Hisgin, which is my street. There at the intersection, when you go down to the high school, so that intersection right there. On the right-hand side there, there is bushes, right on that corner and a. Uh, and a fence, but it's see-through, but it's very hard to see around. That set of bushes. Um, and you kind of have to inch out there to kind of see, but by then, there's also another car coming this way potentially, but you can see that pretty clearly.
That's gonna get worse when the traffic pattern. Well, actually, no, because the cars will be going the other way, so it might not be worse, it might be better. At that particular intersection, when the park traffic pattern changes, if it does. Um, yeah, no, I think that's, that's a good thing, because for us to to, I don't know, I I I guess maybe I could do this, take, take this on my own too, but. If we all do, we might find things that, I, you know, um. Because I, like, for example, I'm thinking of Button, Button Lane, or going down to Treehouse, they have a sign, Treehouse has a sign. I'm wondering, like, someone could say, hey, that sign's obstructing my view because it has a wooden pole, like, how far is that? And then if we, if we enact this, and then there's like, you know, someone's fence and someone's sign, and then we're like, now you have to take it down. Right, like, uh. I, uh, do we, do we know where the number twenty-five came from? Was that just like from model ordinance, or was that? Recommendation from TPW or?
I think it was taken from um, in collaboration with the the DPW director. Other ordinances are out there, so I think it was twenty-five feet.
So I mean, and I'm, I'm, I, to be completely honest, I'm totally fine with that. I, I would love to, you know, um. I wanna make sure that we don't do something that has unintended consequences, so.
Yeah, and here's what I'm concerned about for an unintended consequence, like when you think of planes and exactly what was put there. What was put there, what um, Kaiyan showed how small the individual parcels are in the planes. They're not even fifty feet back from the road, so he was saying that that's, that's part of the problem that we have. But now if we're saying of that small front parcel, now it's almost, what's that, what's that? One where you, you do the bats, come up with the arc? You know what I'm saying? Like, when you're in, like, third grade, you put a pencil in it and you do that. Yeah, so are we imagining like a protractor of twenty-five feet away from the curb in all directions? Or twenty-five feet this way, twenty-five feet that way?
I I think it would be twenty-five feet from, so if this road is here, this road is here, this junction right here.
To where?
To.
Like, right, like, visualize that.
I mean, I think, and I think that that, that's a good, that's a good point, because what falls within that twenty-five feet? Um, is someone's parked, is someone's car parked there. Which can be moved, that's not a big deal. But it would be. Uh, and and again, like I said, I'm I'm fine with this, but I do wanna make sure that we just maybe do a little investigation to see, like, around town. And, you know, um. If if we can come back with a couple of spots that we each identified, then maybe we can do a field trip and with a tape measure. And and just make sure that we don't enact something that we, it like, if they. If if, and and or also potentially, and or have a a clause. That would, you know, grandfather structure, some some structures in. So like, if someone had a fence, it's been that they paid, you know, ten thousand dollars for, and it's twenty, twenty-three feet. That they would necessarily have to take it down.
Yeah, I mean, I'm thinking about this right on the corner, I mean, they would have to take out all their landscaping.
So, so I mean, you know, I I I'm, I'm, I think this is good, I think this is a really good start, I just wanna make sure that we. You know, check into it just a little bit to make sure we're not doing.
A distance of five feet. Um, alright, so let's move on. So section eight dash three six C enforcement penalties. Any violation of section eight dash three six or eight dash three six, oh, sorry, eight dash three six A or eight dash three six B. Are deemed to be dangerous to the public peace and safety and are hereby declared to be nuisances. Whenever any violations of eight dash three six A or eight dash three six B is found to exist. The building commissioner or their authorized representatives shall cause. A written notice to be served at the last known residence or place of business of the owner of said.
It should just say upset property.
Yeah, I was like, that doesn't make sense. Um, by United States mail, delivery to the property or in hand delivery. Such notice. Such notice shall describe by, such notice shall describe by street and number, the property which is. It purports to cover and state the particularity. And state, and state with particularity, the circumstances, the location and nature. Of the condition or conditions giving rise to the violation and the penalty to be assessed per day, the property is in violation. If the owner fails, refuses. Or neglects to abate such nuisance within seven days after receipt of such notice. The owner shall be subject to the penalty provided in section one dash six of this ordinance each day constituting a separate offense.
Okay, we know what one dash six is. Do we have that anywhere? So we know what the penalty is, because it sounds like. Um, it sounds like there's a, there's a penalty outlined in one dash six, but that's not.
It also says of this. Of this ordinance. So that's a question. Again, I think it might be if this was copied and pasted, but I don't know, maybe that's a.
Yeah, so that'd be good for us to know what the penalty is.
Well, that's a question, right? So we're gonna have to go back and and figure that.
Um, and it might just be in the ordinances, my glasses, it's crazy here. I think I have the ordinances pulled up here. No, no, but I I I, like, as long as it's on here, I can zoom in, you know? Search on the page. And, uh, what did we say? It's one dash six?
One dash six, section one dash six.
I have eight, section one dash sixes. Okay, one dash six, general penalty. Uh, whoever violates the provisions of this code of ordinances whereby any act. Or thing is enjoyed or prohibited. Love ordinance language, uh, shall unless other provision is expressly made forfeit and pay a fine of not exceeding three hundred dollars for each offense. Question mark. Why is there a question mark after that?
Because whoever wrote that also thought.
So we're talking about three hundred dollars a day.
So I think we should, I think we should visit that. So that's the next order of this.
Uh, so, but here's the thing. Not exceeding three hundred dollars a day. So.
Question mark.
Question mark. Use a fence, question mark, so I think.
So it could be five dollars.
It could be five dollars a day, uh, and I think that probably what we could do is if we're, if we're, uh. Ta- if we're referencing one dash six, we could probably within the ordinance create a a a penalty. Based on one dash six, which is no more than three hundred dollars a day, so that we could say a twenty-five dollar a day penalty. Whatever we think is reasonable, and we could just put it in here as part of the ordinance. And reference one dash six. So I believe that we can, we can do that, which, and that way we can kind of set what we think is a fair. And reasonable penalty. To be assessed, but I love this. Whoever violates a provision of this code of ordinances whereby any act or thing is enjoy, enjoined. Hold on, let me make it bigger, enjoined or prohibited. Uh, shall unless other provision is expressly made forfeit and pay a fine not exceeding three hundred dollars for each offense, question mark. That was updated in eighty-nine, so I wasn't here, even though I've been here since the eighteen hundreds.
And I was like, forty dollars is too much for a party.
Right, um, so I think. So we'll, we'll think about that, like, I don't wanna like, figure that number out right now. I, so I think the next. Um, thing that we have to do is, one, we have to think about grandfather language, so I can look, I can look into that. Um, and then the other thing is we need to do some field trips. Um, and so I think if maybe we can identify a couple of spots. Each of us, and then we can kind of say, okay, this is what I was. Thinking, so I think if our own neighborhoods might be a good thing.
I think it's a good place to start.
And then we can kind of figure that out.
Taking a little tour of town of all the little accidents.
I mean, and I, like, so I think, you know, shrubs are easier because, like, you can trim a shrub, and and it doesn't. Like, if you have to, like, cut off a piece of shrub to make the visibility better, that's probably less impactful than a fence or a sign. Or a structure of some sort, that that, I feel, I feel like that's gonna be, that could be the crux.
Except for these things on these streets.
But I mean, but we could probably build it in, uh, we could figure out a way to to build it in, so. It was, it was reasonable, and and it might be totally fine as it is, I mean, there might not be. Because I know, like, we, I know we've dealt with this in the past, like, I know that at Cherry Street, there was a sign that was too big, we actually. It it was a nuisance, and and we, even though we didn't have this ordinance, they, we made them move. But that was like a a full obstruction, like, you could not see coming out onto uh, Holyoke Street. So, you know, I I think, I I like this, I think it's good, I think it, uh, it. Like, being able to to make sure the sidewalks stay clear is important for people that are, you know, for kids that are walking to school, for. People that need to, you know, uh, for mobility purposes, I think that's really important. Um, and obviously for, you know, driving vehicles. Having, being able to have line of sight is important as well, so. But, so, you know, a couple of little things and.
Great, so we'll, um, I'll work on the grandfather bees. Consider what a, an appropriate fine is. Uh, and then identify a couple of spots, and then maybe early in January, we can take a field trip. Um, to, and it might be helpful too with snow, if we pick a. There's snow piles, right? Like, that might be a helpful kind of thing. So we'll have to play it a little bit by ear, but I will uh reach out to you to set. Um another day, because we might have to do a weekend.
Yeah.
Um if we're okay, so. Well, maybe we could just think about that right now. Are there any weekends right now that might be?
So we have light?
Yeah. Although no light might be helpful too. I can't see.
Well.
And maybe what we can do is we can practice with our own cars.
Yeah, yeah. Days are getting longer. So even though it's, it's not the twenty first yet, but days have started to get longer, which is weird cuz. Um I guess it's like when the sun rises.
Yeah, well.
But every day it's getting dark a little bit later.
No.
Now. It's on twenty first, right?
The twenty first is the solstice, which is the shortest day of the year, but.
After that, it starts getting longer.
No, but no, the days have started getting longer, it's just the sun doesn't come up as early. So it's it's on the other end, it's so weird how this works. So it went, so the sun started like. And the only reason I know this is because I've been outside. Like at sunset almost every day, and so I've been paying really close attention to the sunset times. So the the earliest it got was um like four sixteen. Um but it's back up to like four twenty-one now.
Hmm.
Um and it's just the the beginning of the day is shorter.
Uh.
So but now, but the day, the the sun is setting later, but the, and so until the twenty first, then the the beginning of the day. Is a little bit longer, so it's weird, it happens on the front end instead of the back end, which is so confusing, but it's. But it makes sense if you're just talking about the length of the full day.
Mm hmm.
So that that really threw me for a loop. Because I'm like, the days are getting longer now and it's not the twenty first, how is this happening? And and so I looked up, I looked it up and it's like, yeah, it's just because the beginning of the day. The sun doesn't rise as early.
Hmm. So Salem the science guy.
Yeah, right?
December twenty first is the solstice.
Yep, that is.
And that's when winter sowing goes out.
Yep.
Alright, so um what are some days that might work for y'all?
The eleventh and the twelfth work for me.
Yep, I can, both of those work for me.
Uh I can't do the eleventh, but I could probably do the twelfth.
Alright, so let's say the twelfth.
Okay.
Um do you wanna do a?
That's, that's for a site visit?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, one o'clock works.
One o'clock, alright. And up, leading up to that.
To be determined.
Yeah, we will identify, um. We will identify some spots and then maybe we can meet in a kind of caravan over or something like that or.
Mm hmm. Sound good.
That work?
Works for me.
Works for me too.
Great, I think this is great. I think it's a good start. I think I'm excited about the Sony ordinance. Um and then I'm meeting with Barbara. On Monday cuz she wants to, there's a couple of things that she wants to bring forward. Um that have just been some changes that um. Uh around kind of dog kennels. Um but also I'm gonna get from her a list of all of the um. Committee requirements, and so I'll be able to present that list to you of are there any um residency requirements for? And we can begin to talk about there, so if we wanna explore this, there are only a few, but um there's that. Um in terms of the, in terms of the um. Um. Waste.
Oh, right.
Um.
Has the um.
Yeah, so they met, but the. Yeah, yeah, so the agricultural commission met. However, the person who was supposed to present that night was sick.
Oh.
So did not have a conversation. They do not meet for another three months, so I'm actually just gonna reach out to her and say, can we talk? I do know, I do understand. That. Speaking of, no pun intended, but like the fences, right? They're kind of. There's one camp that's, we should be able to do, never we went with farmland, and I think there's another group that's. Um, we should be really conscious of.
Well, I feel like documentary that just came out.
Mm hmm.
About um like forever chemicals like PFOs.
Yeah.
And I think it's related.
Yep.
Uh so that might be interesting homework. I haven't seen it yet.
Yeah, I know UMass is doing a lot of research, they just are putting stuff out too, so. I I think this is a, we're on the cutting edge right here, and so I I'm again continuing to try to tread lightly with their process because that is a. Working body and I don't wanna. I don't wanna um. Okay. Un, you know, un, unrest there, right? So I think they're kind of figured that out. Um so that's kind of where we are with that. So I will reach out to her, um and hopefully in in January we'll be able to set up a time that we can get together and do that. Um and move forward with that. So I'll have those other things for you and send those to you. Um other than that, I think we've. You weren't here.
Oh, did you approve the minutes?
We approved the minutes, so I will send all of those things to um Barbara. Uh and we should be good to go. Uh we should be all up to date.
Yeah, good job.
Um. And then we'll um. Uh will be all, will we set and ready to go, I think, ready for the new year? Um I don't know, I did not talk to Barbara. Did you reach out to Counselor Zara to find out if the previous? Minutes from last year were?
Forgot about that. Do we know the dates of those?
I don't know, she just said half the year, so I'm imagining, she said, I'm assuming, I don't know what your schedule was, so. I'm imagining that's July, June forward, but I don't know how often you met.
Uh we didn't really meet much in the summer, so. That's a good question. I don't know. Um. I'll check, I'll check on with Barbara.
Okay. Alright, great. I just wanna make sure.
That's out of sight, out of mind.
Right. Very cool. Anything else for the good of the order? Um, so like I said, I think we have a couple more things coming from from Barbara around the. Um that's, yeah, she also, just to be fully transparent, she also um wanted to discuss. Um some things within the ordinance refer, reference state law, but also writes out the state law. Uh and so she said we might just wanna reference the state law as being redundant, so I'm just kind of.
Okay.
Putting that out there. Um and so that may be something that we wanna do, just to kind of. Minimize the amount of kind of stuff we have. Um cool. Um so I will take a motion to adjourn.
So.
So move on second.
Thank you all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, perfect, great. Thank you so much. It's good to see everybody and see you next time.